I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone and Happy New Year, all of us since our first meeting of 2019. We're going to start off today with a presentation. Mr. Austin is going to present the CAFER for us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Apparently Mr. Austin in company.
You may notice I have an entourage.
Smart, smart man.
So, the CAFER, the Consolidated Annual Financial Report, is one of the major outputs from the Fiscal Services Group, and it is a team effort. I am happy to report that this year we filed on time. And these are the people that made it happen. This is the accounting team, and I wanted to bring them here for the well-deserved recognition. If you don't mind, I would like to quickly introduce each of them. On the end is Crystal Elsie, then we have Jeff Kush, Patricia Matthews, April Gordon, and then to my left here is Hanana Zoo. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for that. As I said, the CAFER, the Consolidated Annual Financial Report, is one of the major work products of the Fiscal Services Group. It is the financial results for the year for the city. Tonight, we're going to be looking at the fiscal year 2018, which ended June 30th, 2018. We'll look at the results of the audit performed by our external auditors. That really comes to you in two forms. There's the audit opinion that gets included with our CAFER, our published report, and then there's the report to the council on internal control matters, items they feel need your attention. After that, we'll go through the financial results, what actually happened with the city. We're going to focus primarily on the general fund. We'll look at the general fund revenues, the general fund expenditures, and then after that, we'll look at the legacy costs of the city, the pension systems, the retiree health care. And one of the big changes this year was our full implementation of GASB-75. I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but GASB-75 essentially takes our unfunded retiree health care obligation from the back of the financial statements in the notes and brings it to the front of the financial statements as a liability, and we'll go over the impact that has. First, looking at the audit results, I am pleased to report that we did get a clean opinion. The unmodified opinion is the best opinion that we can get from our external auditors that says that our financial statements are free from material misstatements. The separate letter that is not included in the CAFER report itself is the internal control letter, and that's where the findings of the auditor identified any internal control matters that the external auditors feel need to be brought to the attention of those charged with governance, in this case, city council and management. I would like to quickly run through the five findings that we had this year related to the financial statements. And these are not listed in any order of importance. This was a question raised by the Finance Committee to the auditors, except for the first one. They feel that that is probably the most important at the moment. The first one related to financial reporting coming out of the Treasurer's Department with the staffing turnover that they've had and the current staffing shortage that they have, the Treasurer's Department has not had the resources necessary in order to timely reconcile cash balances throughout the year. Once again, accounting stepped in this year to help them out with that, and we continue to do so. We do believe that we have put together a plan to remedy this for future audits, so it should not be a recurring finding. The second finding there, 2018-002, relates to the cost allocation and charges between various city departments and the funds within the city. A lot of those numbers are based on old allocations, old methodologies. The auditors recommend that we update those. So, as part of this coming year's budget process, we are taking a deep dive into all of those allocations and charges to make sure that they are accurate and adequately supported. The third finding, the journal entries identified during the audit. As Plaid Moran explained to the Finance Committee, 90 percent of their clients have this finding on a pretty regular basis. There's usually something that they find that they have to recommend an audit entry for, and we did have a couple of those this year. We have put in additional procedures in place to try and catch these at year-end as we're preparing the CAFER, and we'll see how that goes. This one, we don't expect to be recurring, but there is a possibility this one could come back. With the thousands of transactions that we process on a daily, on an annual basis, don't quite catch everything. We're not, we're not there yet. The fourth finding, financial reporting of money held for third parties, that has to do with bonds that we have on deposit, be they building bonds or performance bonds. We have a significant balance going back many years, and these amounts have not been reconciled on a regular basis. We do need to spend some time digging into them to make sure there's not money that's either owed to third parties or money that could be coming back to the city. We have put a financial staff person in charge of monitoring all the new bonds that come through to make sure that those are properly recorded and reconciled, and we will need to allocate some more resources among the departments to look into these. The fifth and final finding there is for the reconciliation of retiree health care costs. We have put in a new procedure to make sure that what the city is paying for retiree health care is what the trust is reimbursing the city for. During 2018, there was an amount owing from the trust to the city of about $100,000. We've since rectified that and are making sure that we look at that going forward. So again, five findings, and we believe we should be able to cure all these in time for the next audit. Moving on to the financial results, we look at the general fund. We'll look at the revenues first. So here's a five-year history of the general fund's revenues. As you can see, 63 percent of general fund revenues is related to property taxes. That is the main source of our funding. Unfortunately, due to Proposal A and Headley, if you'll notice, the property taxes for 2018 are just about the same as what was collected in 2014. It makes it hard to run a business or it makes it hard to run a city when your primary revenue source isn't growing yet your expenditures are. In total, the general fund brought in approximately 71.3 million in revenues. Looking at the taxable property values, you can see back in 2007, 2008 is when we peaked, and then the Great Recession hit, and we are still recovering from that. Our 2018 levels taxable value of about 2.4 is not predicted to attain 2008 levels until well past 2025, probably somewhere in the 2035 range. So, that's, that's the source of our, our primary revenues, and that's why our revenues have been relatively flat over the past few years. State shared revenues, the money we get from the state, has also taken a dive. This graph goes all the way back to 2000, 2001, where you can see we were getting about 9.5 million. Our 2018 revenue was just under 7 million, and the state is projecting that in 2019 we'll be just over 7 million. Gas and weight tax, otherwise known as Act 51, this is the money for our roads. So, we've got three lines there. The bottom gold line is the local portion, the blue line is our major roads portion, and then the green would be the combined. This is another one of those revenues that has been relatively flat since 2001. 2001, the total was just under 5 million, and we're, we're slowly creeping above that in the past few years. I do want to talk a little bit about 2018 number. That 9.3 million is not really a $4 million jump in one year. What happened there was, there was a portion of 2017 funds that were deferred into 2018. The state has also increased this slightly in both 2017 and 2018, but I would not expect to see anywhere near 9 million again in 2019. When we look at the budget versus actual, so what did we plan on? So, our original budget, budget revenues for the general fund was 67.8 million. Throughout the year, we came back to council and adjusted the budget to 69.7 million, and we actually brought in 71.3 million. So that's to the good. Charges for services was a major variance there. We budgeted 3.5 million, brought in something closer to 5.4 million. Charges for services includes various revenues, including ambulance, cellphone tower leases, street lighting, things along those lines. Our license and permits, primarily from the Building Department, exceeded our expectations as well by 1.5 million there. The fines and forfeitures, that is the revenue that our courts bring in, and that was actually down by almost half a million dollars. We had budgeted 3.5, and it came in just over 3. And then that last set of columns there, the intergovernmental, that's our state shared revenue primarily. There's a couple of other smaller things in there, but that actually came in higher than budget as well. So, we had total favorable revenue variance of approximately 1.6 million. We then look to general fund expenditures. So this is where the city spends the money. Again, the years are five-year history, or actually, this one's a six-year history, and it shows public safety is the largest chunk of our expenditures. This year, it was 72, 72 percent of general fund expenditures, followed by general government, that's what it takes to run and administer the city, and then the other classes of expenditures as well. In total, the general fund expended about 66.5 million. Good news on the variance front. Expenditures came in below budget. So, our original budget was about 68 million. We did amend that to about 85 million. That includes a rather large increase for Northland, right? And then our actual expenditures came in at 66.5 million. So our total favorable variance of 18.4 million includes that Northland piece, and that's actually what you see on the right side of this graph, the support services having a favorable variance of 15 million. That is earmarked for Northland. General government, we spent about 1.3 million less than what we had budgeted. Public safety was about 400,000 less, and public services about 800,000 less. Moving on to our legacy costs, these are our pension systems and our retiree health care. So we have two separate pension systems. The first is the Southfield Employees Retirement System, or SERS. This covers our general employees outside of police and fire. What we look at when we look at assessing the health of a pension system, a quick and easy number is the funded status. Funded status on that bottom row there, so in 2018, we had planned net position or assets of approximately 115 million versus the estimated liability of 155 million. That puts us at a funded status of about 74 percent. Turning to the fire and police retirement systems for our public safety officers, the planned net position had just under 200 million and an estimated liability of 267 million, which puts that status at slightly higher than SERS at 75 percent. The unfunded pensions for, I'm sorry, the unfunded amount for those would be 67 million for the SERS, and then, I can't read my own notes.
67 million is firing police.
Sorry. Excuse me. And 40 million for SERS, so we have about 107 unfunded liability for our pension. This shows the contributions that the city has made to the pension systems. That blue line there is for the SERS plan, and the red line there is for fire and police. In 2018, we put in approximately 10.3 million dollars. Looking next at our retiree health care plan. Funding status on retiree health care is a little bit different, and let me explain why. Because the state of Michigan a number of years ago passed a law that said you have to fund your pension. Whatever the actuaries say you need to put in, you have to meet that obligation. No such law was passed for retiree health care. So, there's no legal requirement to fund it what the actuaries say you should. That being said, a lot of systems fund nothing. They don't have anything set aside, so we're ahead of the game in that respect. Looking at our SERS retiree health care portion, our funding status is about 14.1 percent. That translates to $132 million unfunded liability there. If we then look at fire and police, this is, again, better funded at 24.4 percent, but that's $156 million liability unfunded. One of the other items that you'll see on your consent agenda tonight is the PA 202 report, receive and file on that. That is an act passed by the state in 2017 to address the funding status of your pension and retiree health care systems. We have been working with our outside consultants, as well as the various departments within the city, to come up with a plan to bring up this funding status. This shows the contributions that the city has made into the health care funds. In 2018, we put in approximately 8.8 million, and that is about half of what the actuary would recommend putting in. So earlier, I had mentioned that one of the biggest changes to our CAFER, our financial statements this year, was the full implementation of GASB-75. And that's taking that unfunded retiree health care liability, that 288 million dollars, and putting it on the face of our statements as a liability. So, the way that we see that is the impact that it has on the net position or fund balance. And you can see that our unrestricted net position for 2018, that rightmost column there, is the negative 288 million dollars. So our total net position has decreased over the past several years. We had the implementation of GASB-67, 68, which put the pension liability on the statements, and that took the unrestricted down to a negative number. And now with the addition of the retiree health care unfunded liability, that brings us all the way down to there. And that is the summary of the CAFER. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council?
Austin, I really want to thank you and your staff for doing this, for getting this job out, and just for the, for the last three years, for the last four years, we've been, the audit being on time has been top, top of mind for this city, for the Finance Committee, and I really want to commend you and your staff for being steadfast and just driving forward. I understand some of the issues that popped up. I was intimately involved in trying to get some unresolved, but you and your staff should be commended, and this is a sign of health for the city. And being a finance person, whenever I heard a city or corporation or anything having a late audit return, it sent bad signals. So this, this sends a very good signal for the city of Southfield, and I want to commend you for that. So, I know I've done it in private and in our committee meetings, but now I just want the whole public to know that you guys have done a good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Cyper?
I also want to thank you. I've sat here for many years, and since you've arrived, this is so much clearer, and, you know, you're, it's forthright, and I congratulate you on getting this done on time. Can you go back to the slide about revenues, right at the beginning, where the, the lines were?
That one?
No, actually, the bar, not the bar graph, but the line. Yeah. So, your estimate, it probably is, it'll be 2030-something before we would get back to where we were pre-recession.
Correct. And that translates to about a loss of 20 million dollars a year.
Exactly. I, I can't drive that home enough, how, between Headley, Proposal A, and what's happened here, what's happened to our tax base, and it's, it's a very long, slow recovery, and that's if the economy remains strong.
Correct.
So, we're looking at a good another 10, 12 years before we get back to where we were prior to the Great Recession.
Yes.
It's pretty serious.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
And, yeah, Austin, I think everyone appreciates all the work that you and your team have done, and made a very fine presentation, and I don't know, for me, for somebody that's not a money person like this, it makes it a lot easier to understand what's going on here, the way you presented, so I appreciate that as well. And Mr. Mandelbaum?
Again, like everyone said, thank you very much, so I know it's, it's a lot of work. Can we, as council, get a copy of your PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
I know we got the big CAFER.
It wasn't included in your packet?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I intended it to be. Yes, I will get that out to council.
And emails also?
Yes, I know you love email.
All right, thank you.
Clerk Hawkins?
I just wanted to thank the team. I see you guys on a daily basis, working, and it's not often you get excited about getting emails over the break, but when you sent that email, I think it excited everyone, everyone on this DI, so great job, guys.
Thank you very much, and again, it is my team that made this happen, so.
Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I would also like to commend you on the, on the results. But I also would like to say to the listening audience, the, the chart that shows that it'll be 2030 or so by the time we get back to where we were prior to 2008, that's the revenue. The expenses keep on going.
Correct.
And the gap gets wider and wider. So, I know the residents expect us to fix all the potholes right away, do everything right away, and I can assure you that we have been through our work with the whole staff, the financial staff, the engineers, the, the public works, and, and fire and police have been counting our coins very closely and, and praying a lot that we can make it through. So, stay with us. We're working hard at, at keeping the city of Southfield the kind of city that you expect, but it's, it's getting tougher and tougher to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
I just want to say thank you as well. I really want to say thank you to the entire team. We usually only get to tell Austin, excuse me, I'm losing my voice here, but the whole team, I know how hard you work, the late nights, the weekends. I truly understand and appreciate all the work that you do on a daily basis, but especially this past year with the changes, the training, the communications, the feedback, the extra work that you did, we really, really, really appreciate that, and all your hard work is really shown here in this CAFER being on time. And you did it with smiles. I mean, that is just wonderful. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson? I'd like to compliment you also and your staff. I know what a tough job it was. I think the public really ought to know, as Councilman Frazier stated, that, you know, when you look at what the state is spending and what the federal government's spending and the trillions, it's all been on our back. We've been, you know, suffering all the time that they're blowing the money. And I'll put it that way, because, you know, with Proposal A and, and what they're doing with Headley and all that, where they're stealing our tax dollar, it's difficult to balance the budget sometimes. And I give you guys a lot of credit in getting the right numbers in the right place and allowing us to make the decision to keep the city going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I too would like to thank Austin and his team. I think they've done an outstanding job. I'd also like to, you know, just recognize the work of the Finance Committee. I mean, the Finance Committee is, is now meeting once a month. Those meetings, you know, two, three, four hours long. Austin's been in those trenches, as well as Hanan, and the direction that council has given us, that's, that really says a lot regarding the commitment and also the priority this is. I also think there's some things out of this, out of Austin's presentation, that craft themselves very nicely into a legislative agenda. A city needs to take a stronger position on revisions to Headley, the Proposal A, the House bill dealing with black box legislation is, is back in play. I think there are a number of things that can craft themselves into speaking to make sure that Lansing gives us our fair share. I'm very concerned that the particular partisan agendas that are coming out don't necessarily speak to the needs of local governments nor school districts. And we're part of this system. When the state talks about, you know, sense of place, we're the first line of service to make that happen for folks. So, you know, give that some thought for our Legislative Committee, and again, to Austin and the full team for making this happen. As administrator, it's a lot easier to know that it's in on time. In addition to this, the reporting to our bond rating companies has been submitted, and all on time, and it just takes a lot of stress off.
Great. All right. Well, I think you probably have heard enough of the thank yous, and probably are ready to go home, so. So, thanks for hanging out with us this evening, and again, we do appreciate all the work you've done.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes, Mr. Cruz.
Mr., you got a lot of kudos tonight. You know, 2019 is, we go for the same thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we don't want you to sleep on your laurels.
No, we're going to keep this going. All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Very good. We got a regular set of meeting minutes from December 10th to be approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Taylor?
I move that we approve the regular minutes of December 10th, 2018.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, that we approve the regular meeting minutes of December 10th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ferguson?
I just wanted to make a comment. In the minutes, I'm just speaking to my own self, really, but when I oppose a, a particular item, and somebody looks at the minutes, says oppose, I'd like to have at least some indication why I was to stand out in opposing it. I'd like to see that in the minutes, as we have some of the other comments that are in the minutes. But I'm not opposed to the approval of the minutes of December 10th.
Okay. Madam Clerk, is that something we can take care of? Okay. So I know you have given your rationale for your opposition to the thing, so we want to make, we'll make that duly noted. Are there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair? I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through D.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, that we approve the consent agenda items A through D. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Consent agenda item is approved. We'll now move to Communications. Our first request for recognition is Pamela Gerald, who I don't believe is here today, as well as our second request, Gerard Mullin, who I don't see either. So we'll go to number, letter C, request is from Sonia Simpson-Gartner. If you'd approached the lectern, you have three minutes. All right, we see you back there. I won't, we won't start the clock yet.
Well, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Okay. Sonia Simpson-Gartner, address is 20, oh no, I'm sorry, 30575. I'm not going to say to Russ, because we keep making this public, I just would like to say that nothing has changed. I am still having the exact same problems. What I have tried to do is not only help myself, but help some others that are having the exact same situation, and unfortunately, I'm being stopped with everything that I am attempting to do, not only for myself, but for other residents. So, I'm letting you guys know that I am going to continue to come to your meetings, I am going to continue to protest, represent myself, and fight for my rights. I think that it's very important that we have this opportunity to come before you guys. Mayor Seiver? I'm just letting you guys know that there was a flyer that we generated. The flyer was not racist in any type of way, it was just making a point, showing the makeup of Southfield, letting everybody know or waking up everybody in Southfield and asking that the African-American population become aware of what's going on in Southfield. I have personally been attacked with citizens or individuals trying to act like I am racist. I am asking for help with my situation. Again, nothing has changed, and I'm still having problems. So, eventually, those problems that I'm having and the fact that I'm not able to find a job is going to eventually show. Councilwoman Morris was nice enough to ask me to forward over my resume, I've not heard anything with that. The Human Services Department with Southfield was nice enough to provide some services. One was to offer psychiatric counseling for my daughter, she's not having any problems and we don't need that type of service. But I do appreciate the time, but I am letting the city of Southfield and the department know that we are going to be creating a group or an organization to work with Southfield and to create an organization that will help fight police harassment and police brutality, because that is important to us. And that's all we're trying to do, is ask that we clean up what's going on in Southfield. We're not trying to cause any type of violence or do anything that's wrong, we're just looking out for the civil rights of the individuals in Southfield. So, I'm just asking that you guys will continue to work with me, because I am going to be very active with working with you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I'm here today really to ask two very specific questions. The first one, what really is the city going to do about this septic tank issue? And the second, most importantly, what is happening to your moral compass? For the past several weeks, I've watched as several city council have really taken up the charge to valiantly be a champion for 18 gas station homeowners, gas station owners to keep storage boxes on their properties to house their ice, but the same council people are tight-lipped, quiet, and ears wide shut on what is happening to over 1,600 properties that are affected by this septic tank issue. Let me give this a proper perspective. Over 1,600 properties could easily be over 5,000 Southfield residents. 5,000. That's more votes than some of you could secure to attain or retain your seats. I also saw where this body unanimously voted to allow business owners a full 90 days to remove recycle bins for donation clothes, but none of you have said anything about the extension for over 1,600 properties, over 5,000 residents that live with this fear of the city's neglect of enforcing this ordinance. What is happening to your moral compass? Are you to say that over 5,000 Southfield residents don't have the same dignity to have the respect of having an extension to remove a recycle bin? Am I to believe that this council wants me to think that my family and 5,000 others don't have the value to you as a bag of ice? Really? What really is happening here? Last year, I reached out to association presidents that came out here and spoke about this very thing. Publicly, there's been nothing happening. Sure, there's the Septic 101 brochure, but no disrespect to the creator, I know third graders that can create that. What's most frightening is the letter that comes with that brochure, that frightens and intimidates your constituents, that they have 30 days to get a certification or be forced to take on, in most cases, loans that are up to $65,000, all of which they didn't know going in, because this city did not enforce the ordinance. What is happening here, really? Where is your moral compass? Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Keith Harris.
How you guys doing today? All racing life matter, P.O. Box 2769, zip code 48037. Before I say anything, I'mma tell you, I'mma ask everybody to think about our federal workers, you know, who's doing without paychecks, who's living from check to check. Now, doing that, we just got through seeing a graph of the finances of the city. Downsized that graph to a homeowner. Just downsize it, and ask yourself, how can the homeowner take on any more than what the city can take on? Okay? This is tremendous. Your average homeowner can't live with another bill. Nobody can. You know, I had the opportunity, I was at a big function and a judge walked up to me and he said, Keith, we heard about your situation in Southfield. Then he said, I don't think they can force you guys into signing over your homes or taking on more than what you can take on, especially a non-dischargeable lien on your property. He said, only person has the authority to sign off on a bankruptcy is a federal court judge. He said, I truly don't believe a district court judge had that authority to force you into it, definitely not a code enforcement officer, definitely not a prosecutor. And I'm saying, like I said, think about the homeowners, think about everybody. I just watched them try to do a lady's house in our community, took them four months to de-water, at her expense, come to find out they couldn't de-water, so they backed away from the job. I'll take pictures of all these jobs, and I'm at every Democratic meeting. Now, we got the 13th District, the 14th District, we got state reps, we got a lot of people joining us in our fight. This is turning into a big, big ordeal for the city of Southfield, and it looks bad. If your average federal worker is only making $500 a week, you know, that's after taxes, then think about what retirees are bringing in. You understand what I'm saying? Think about the people, think about, always put people first, you know? I worked a very big construction job one day, and two black men wanted to rape a pregnant white woman, just 'cause she was ugly. I stepped in, I defended this pregnant white woman with my life, I can prove this. She had a child that was born with cancer, but after she won her lawsuit, she called me up on the phone, she thanked me for everything I did, and said, can I give you something, Keith? Even though I spent money helping her, I couldn't take the money because she was living in a trailer park. Everybody ain't got it. Everybody ain't got 30 grand in their pocket in the bank or 10 grand in the bank. So, and everybody can't afford, you know, any more added on to their incomes. All I'm saying is, the only thing you got is your heart, and put your heart and your spirit and your prayers in other people, and everything will work out. I bless all y'all.
Our next request for recognition is Latoya Graham.
Good blessed evening, council. How are y'all today?
Good.
How are you, mayor? Today, I want to present that over 5, 15, 15,000 homeless people are in between Southfield, Oak Park, Detroit, and Pontiac, and over 10,000 in number of families. Most of them are placed in homes that are in Southfield, Michigan, in between Highland, Michigan, and Pontiac, Michigan, which I have pictures of, of condemned homes that are placed around these families. The reason why I am here today is because I want to present a proposal to be able to open a recreational center, a recovery center, and a recovery center and a shelter for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days out of a year, for veterans, runaways, mental health, homeless, victims that are released from jail, substance abusers, and also, I want to be able to bring world disaster relief to our community, which will bring our community up. If we are able to place this recreational center in each one of our communities, which I have, this is the third council that I have been in front of, I am going to Southfield, I'm going to Highland Park, and I'm going to Pontiac Council to speak to them about investing in this, what we need for our community. If we had this for our community, a lot of our people would be able to move out of their homes that are damaged, which they are squatting in, and be able to move into this facility and be able to develop themselves back to regular development, to be able to move back into their homes and bring up our community instead of bringing it down. Every single one of y'all have pictures, I've given each one of y'all information on the proposal. I have been going over this proposal for almost about six months. I have presented this to over four cities. This is something that needs to be done by all of us, and if we all, each one of us in each city from each mayor could put a certain amount together to be able to put into this resource center, to open it up, I think it would bring all of our communities up as one. So, how I think that we can do this is that we retroback the money into the community, we make it a nonprofit, and we put forth to putting our people inside of buildings that they can either stay there and develop, or they can move out and move on with their lives after they have developed in this process. So, I have presented this to y'all, y'all already have the proposal, I would like y'all to read over it if y'all can, and I will email y'all all the information that I can get, and I will be back every week until I can talk to y'all to get the information of bringing back up our city. Please look over the pictures, because it is what our community is going through, and it is the poverty that we are living in, and I am the mother that is dealing with it, the people that are knocking on my door and standing outside of your City Hall to get help, and they're staying, and they're laying on your concrete, and everybody is walking past them and they're not getting the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the communications portion of the meeting. Council? Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy 2019, looking forward to a lot of progress. But also, every resident and business should have received their Southfield calendar with all the information about city council meetings, dates, and programming throughout the year, as well as valuable information, how to reach different departments. So, hopefully, everyone has received that. If you haven't, we do have some additional copies at our information desk here at City Hall. Also, you should have received, or last, hopefully, before this started, but the winter schedule for Parks and Rec came out in the mail. I believe classes have, may have started or will be starting shortly, but there's also general, there's a lot of information about programming that will be going on throughout the month of February for Black History Month, through Parks and Rec, as well as Winterfest and some other wonderful community events that will be hosting here at City Hall and throughout the community. So, please make sure to take a look. And again, if you haven't gotten it, you can visit the Parks and Rec information desk here on campus. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was reading this Detroit News, I think it was yesterday, and I seen where our former mayor, Brenda Lawrence, has been put on two of the top committees in Congress. I just want to applaud all the work that she's done to get there. She sure deserves it, because she works hard.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I was waiting for Mr. Mandelbaum to make his normal list of announcements, but I want to remind everyone that on the 21st, next Monday, is Martin Luther King Jr. program in the city of Southfield, it starts at nine o'clock at Hope United Church, and the parade or the march is from the church to the pavilion, and then there's a program in the pavilion, and there will be a taste fest after the, after the program. So, come one, come all, and it's a day on, not a day off. 21st, thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Through the chair, to the city administrator, I was just wondering, where are we or have we started forming our 2020 census committees? I know we're starting 2019, but we have to be prepared for everything that's going to be going, oh, I'm sorry.
We are going to have a complete count committee. I've met with the United States Census Bureau representative. This time around, the Census Bureau is, the United States Census, it does not have a Michigan office, they've decided that Michigan will be part of, and several other states will be part of Chicago, although we do have a local person working, she happens to be a resident of Farmington, who I've met with twice, and our complete count committee, staff-wise, will include Deputy City Administrator John McGrina and Community Relations Director Michael Mannion. I have talked to the Southfield Public Schools, because it's critical that kids learn about the census, there's a whole curriculum for schools, as well as get parents to be counted. And then, we're taking a look at a couple of areas in the city that in 2010 didn't have the best response. They were, the count was a little lower. One of them may, is the area just west of here, Evergreen, or rather Civic Center Drive and Northwestern, and that may have something to do with the fact that it's Lawrence Tech Campus.
Okay.
But college students are counted, anybody that's here, whether you're a citizen or not, is considered part of the count. So, as 2019 rolls along, we will be doing more, you'll hear more about our Census Complete Count Committee. Also, I'll be joining efforts with Oakland County.
Okay.
That's doing a major push. So, we are in the very beginning stages of developing this committee, and as everyone knows, it's extremely important to have people counted, because it, everything from who represents us, to shared revenues, state and federal revenues. So, we are just gearing up, but thank you for asking.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for informing me, because I was really concerned about that. Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
I just want to welcome everybody back to 2019, and I have a feeling that 2019 will be a good year for the city. But, and as I've mentioned in the past, individuals who are at home, you can get the council agenda, the full impact of all the backup, everything that we see, if you go to the city clerk's website and look under the city council, and you see council agenda, because some of the things that we go through, we will not obviously be giving all the details, otherwise, we'll be here for a very lengthy time. So, just as a public service announcement, you can get the, all the backup of the agenda that we are dealing with. That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. And I just want to add to Mr. Mandelbaum's comments about Black History Month, just to give a little more commentary. The kickoff event here is on February 2nd from 4:00 to 9:00. We have a couple of events taking place during that time period, Black History 101 Mobile Museum.
Uh, Black History 101 Mobile Museum, uh, will be on site. Um, and they'll be giving a presentation by founder Khalid El Hakim. Uh, we'll also have a lecture by Professor Griff of Public Enemy, um, who's also a Rock and Roll, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame inductee. Um, I remember growing up on him, so he's good and I've, and I've heard him speak before, so I know he's, I can attest to the fact that he's very interesting. Uh, there'll also be music, um, and, uh, free admission will be taking place in the Southfield Pavilion. Uh, there'll also be a movie night on February 15th at seven o'clock that is, uh, on a movie titled, "I Am Not Your Negro," Oscar-nominated documentary that's going to explore the history of racism in the United States that also is free to the public. It'll be in room 115 in the Parks and Rec building. Um, some other events that'll be taking place that Parks and Recs is hosting as well. There'll be a couples game night on Friday, February 8th, uh, that will also have music and, and fun and everything like that. So we encourage people to come out and celebrate, um, you know, Black History Month and just celebrate each other and have a good time. And, uh, there's also a mid-winter break camp. So if you have kids between ages of five and thirteen, um, we will have, uh, a, a mid-winter break camp for them, uh, from nine to four-thirty, uh, beginning on February 19th and also going to, to February 22nd. So, um, all those things are going on, as well as, uh, one other announcement that I was asked to, uh, share had to do with open skate as related in the, um, the ice skating, uh, rink here on, on our, on the campus, that we've got some additional hours or at least adjusted hours to try to create more open time for skating. So on, at least on Sundays, uh, the new hours will be twelve-thirty to two P.M. for open skate as well as five-thirty to seven P.M. on Sundays as well. So, um, please make note of that and, uh, if you want to take advantage of those opportunities. And any questions that you have, you can call, uh, 248-796-4620 and, uh, get this and, uh, other information that what Parks and Recs is doing on a regular basis. Any other things from council? All right. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening and a happy new year to everybody. Uh, thank you, uh, Council President Cruz for mentioning that, uh, the new winter Parks and Rec brochure is out and many of these programs that you've just mentioned are in that brochure, so there's more, uh, detail. The brochures were mailed before the holidays and there are copies available here at Parks and Rec as well as City Hall. Earlier this evening, uh, I, uh, you may have noticed I wasn't, uh, present. I had the pleasure of being over at Saskan Technologies. This is our, our newest tech company, uh, that's arrived in Southfield. Um, Saskan, uh, does, um, a wide range of things. They're, uh, in Asia, Europe, uh, Central America, and Silicon Valley, and they've opened, um, they moved to Detroit because they're doing a lot of work with the, um, mobility of cars as well as the safety features. Uh, for instance, this evening I saw a demonstration on, um, uh, you know, from time to time we hear somebody falling asleep at the wheel. Uh, the technology that they've developed, they can tell when somebody's eyes close while they're driving. Uh, and the car does all this shaking and baking and all this stuff to let the driver know, hey, um, eyes on the road. Um, at any rate, uh, the great thing about this company also is that, uh, they want, uh, they see Detroit as the world headquarters for the automobile industry. Uh, they wanted to be here. Um, and obviously, they could have picked anywhere in Metro Detroit and they chose Southfield. And, uh, one of the reasons they chose Southfield is because they're hoping to partner with Lawrence Tech, uh, as well as, uh, one of their chief, um, uh, customers is Denso and they actually are in the, um, uh, River, River Place Office Center right next to Denso on, on Telegraph Road. They're starting with, um, about seventy employees. They hope by, within a year, uh, or a year and a half to be up to, uh, two hundred employees. So this is, um, it's just another part of our tech portfolio. Um, and, uh, they're very appreciative of all the work that Shelley Freeman, our Business Development Director, has done to bring them here, get them connected, uh, to Southfield. Um, and then finally, um, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, you know, we have an active chapper, chapter of My Brother's Keeper and, uh, My Brother's Keeper is doing a little bit, uh, different thing this year. They're doing, um, uh, Meal with a Message. It's kind of like Lunch and Learn. And, um, the next, uh, event will take place on, um, Saturday, uh, January 26th, uh, from eleven A.M. to one-thirty P.M. in Parks and Rec. And, um, the meal, uh, each month there's a speaker and there, uh, it's free to kids, um, in grade six through twelve. And, uh, each month there's a topic. This, uh, month's, uh, topic is goal setting. Um, and, um, again, uh, uh, the event is free and lunch is provided, but they've asked so that they make sure they have proper meal count, that pre-register, registration is required. So the number to register is 248-796-4503. Again, that's 796-4503 and the date is Saturday, January 26th from eleven A.M. to one-thirty P.M. in Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you. And you just, I don't know, you were, when you mentioned food, I, it reminded me that Beans and Cornbread is actually one of our sponsors for our Black History Month program, so I just want to make sure we acknowledge them as well, too. So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Zorn?
I have no, no items this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Attorney, we're going to hold off on our?
Yes, that's going to be referred to the Legislative Committee.
Correct. Okay.
The unattended collection bin licensing ordinance.
Correct. Okay. So we'll be bringing that back at a later date. Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that we do have a local election on Tuesday, November the 5th and candidate packets are available in my office. Uh, just keep in mind that, uh, with the Michigan state law, if you start to get signatures this early, that your signatures are only good for a hundred and eighty days, so you'd have to turn those in, um, sooner rather than later. But, um, candidate packets are available for pickup. Thank you.
All righty. Never stops. All right. Um, Mr. Treasure, do anything? All right. Planner, assessor, engineers? I don't think I see anybody here. Um, what are we going to schedule that meeting, Madam Clerk, for this evening or for our next meeting?
Uh, we can, uh, for the record, we can put it on now that we'll, uh, just vote on. We'll be having a special, uh, meeting on January the 22nd.
Twenty-second.
At seven P.M.
Okay.
Uh, to discuss, uh, items pursuant to, uh, evaluation performance that's pursuant to, uh, closed session under, you know, closed session, we can go into closed session.
So we, we need to?
Under the Open Meeting Act, that's correct.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote? So we need to take a vote on that?
Yes, yes, so that can be in a permanent, we can go ahead and post that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair? I'd like to move that we, uh, schedule a special meeting on January 22nd at seven P.M. for the city administrator evaluation pursuant to the, uh, well, Opens Meeting Act, it will be closed session.
All right. It's been supported, uh, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Braywell that we schedule, um, a closed session meeting to, uh, to do the evaluation for the city administrator. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right.
And the, and the time again is?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Uh, we have two ordinances to enact.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number seventeen hundred.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by, um, Ms. Taylor, that we enact ordinance one-seven-zero-zero. That is the?
Conditional.
The conditional, the rezoning request.
Is that, that's for, uh, Cal, Cal mat?
Cal mat. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number seventeen oh-one.
No.
No, 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 no.
Oh, we got to take, so we don't need that one.
Actually?
It's different.
No, it's different. We were going to do seventeen oh-two.
Which one is that?
If I could through the chair?
Yes.
That was, um, seventeen oh-one was the zoning aspect regulations regarding the unattended collection bins. What we discussed in study session was the licensing aspect. It's different than the zoning aspect that came before, um, this body on December 17th.
You want to speak a little louder or?
Okay, I'm sorry. On, um, ordinance seventeen oh-one, there was a public hearing, um, on December 17th. This was the zoning regulations in reference to the unattended collection bins contained within chapter forty-five of the city's zoning code. What was discussed in study session this evening was the licensing aspect, not the zoning aspect, of the unattended collection bins.
They're two separate items.
They are two separate, definitely.
Okay.
Okay. Did we get a motion? I'm sorry. I forgot.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Well, we, I move that we enact ordinance number seventeen oh-one.
Support.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Braywell. We enact ordinance seventeen zero-one. Any further questions? All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
All right. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? All right then. Meeting adjourned.